Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to take up additional reference of business.
The Secretary General is directed to read the additional reference of business.
Additional reference of business, verified complaints for impeachment. Impeachment complaint against Vice President Sara Z. Duterte, filed by at least one-third of all the members of the House of Representatives on February 5, 2025. Impeachment complaint filed against Vice President Sara Z. Duterte, filed by Teresita Quintos Deles, Father Flaviano, SBD Gary Alejano et al., and endorsed by Representative Percival B. Sendanya of the Akbayan Party List on December 2, 2024. Impeachment complaint filed against Vice President Sara Z. Duterte, filed by Teodoro Casino, Lisa Masa, Neri Colomares et al., and endorsed by Representatives Franz de Castro of the Akteacher Party List, Representative Arlene D. Rosas of the Gabriela Party List, and Representative Raúl Daniel A. Manuel of the Kabataan Party List on December 4, 2024. Impeachment complaint filed against Vice President Sara Z. Duterte, filed by Reverend Father Antonio Labiau Jr., Reverend Father Rico P. Ponse, Reverend Father Jonicio B. Ramos et al., and endorsed by Representative Gabriel H. Bordado Jr. of the 3rd District of Camarines Sur, and Representative Lex Anthony Chris A. Collada of the AMBIS OVA Party List on December 19, 2024.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, today as provided for in our additional reference of business, a verified impeachment complaint against Vice President Sara Simmerman Duterte has been filed by at least one-third of all the members of the House of Representatives on February 5, 2025. Mr. Speaker, for the record, may we inquire from the Secretary General the total membership of the House as of today, February 5, 2025?
The Secretary General will please respond.
Mr. Speaker, as of the present, the total number of members of the House of Representatives is 306.
The Majority Leader is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, may we inquire from the Secretary General how many members of the House verified and swore before him the impeachment complaint?
Secretary General, please respond to the query of the Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Pursuant to Section 14, Rule 4 of the Rules of Procedures in impeachment proceedings, the total number of House members who verified and swore before me this impeachment complaint is 215 House members.
The Majority Leader is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, may we know what is one-third of the total number of the members of the House?
The Secretary General will please respond.
Mr. Speaker, one-third of the total number of members of the House is 102.
The Secretary General has responded to the query of the Majority Leader. The Majority Leader is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, for the record, in consonance with the Constitution on Article 11, on accountability of public officers, particularly Section 3, parárapor, and pursuant to Section 14, Rule 4 of the Rules of Procedure in impeachment proceedings, which provides as follows: Section 14, endorsement of the complaint resolution to the Senate. A verified complaint resolution of impeachment filed by at least one-third of all the members of the House shall constitute the articles of impeachment. And in this case, the verified complaint resolution shall be endorsed to the Senate in the same manner as an approved bill of the House. Considering that the Secretary General has certified that at least 215 members of the House of Representatives have verified and swore before him this said impeachment complaint against Vice President Sara Simmerman Duterte. And consistent with our rules, I move that the Secretary General be directed immediately to endorse the same to the Senate.
There is a motion to direct the Secretary General to immediately endorse to the Senate the impeachment complaint. Having been filed by more than one-third of the membership of the House or a total of 215 members, is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is sole-directed. The session is suspended. The session is resumed. The Majority Leader is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, in accordance with Section 16, Rule 6 of the Rules of Procedure in impeachment proceedings, I move to elect the following members of the House of Representatives as prosecutors in the trial on the impeachment complaint filed against Vice President Sara C. Duterte: Representative Jervil Jinkybitrix Luistro, Representative Romeo M. Acop, Representative Ramon Rodrigo Gutierrez, Representative Joel Archua, Representative Raúl Angelo Gil Bongalon, Representative Loretto B. Acharon, Representative Marcelino C. Libanan, Representative Arnán C. Panaligan, Representative Isabel María Samora, Representative Lawrence R. Defensor, and Representative Jonathan Keith T. Flores. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to elect the aforementioned members as prosecutors in the trial of the impeachment complaint against Vice President Sara Z. Duterte. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Majority Leader is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, in the additional reference of business earlier read by the Secretary General, there are three other impeachment complaints filed against Vice President Sara C. Duterte. These are: The impeachment complaint filed by Teresita Quintos Deles, Father Flaviano Villanueva, Gary Alejano et al., and endorsed by Representative Percival Sendanya of Akbayan Party List on December 2, 2024. Next is impeachment complaint filed by Teodoro Casino, Lisa Masa, Neri Colomares et al., and endorsed by Representative Franz El Castro of Akteachers Party List, Representative Arlene Rosas of Gabriela Party List, and Representative Raúl Daniel Manuel of Kabataan Party List on December 4, 2024. And the last one, Mr. Speaker, the third one, impeachment complaint filed by Reverend Father Antonio Labiau Jr., Reverend Father Rico Ponse, Reverend Father Jonicio Ramos et al., and endorsed by Representative Gabriel Bordado Jr. of the 3rd District of Camarines Sur, and Representative Lex Anthony Chris Collada of AMBIS OVA Party List on December 19, 2024. Pursuant to our Rules of Procedure in the impeachment proceedings, considering that the plenary has already transmitted to the Senate the impeachment complaint filed by 215 members on February 5, 2025, that is today, I move that the three other impeachment complaints filed on December 2, 2024, December 4, 2024, and December 19, 2024 be transmitted to the archives. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to transmit to the archives the aforementioned three impeachment complaints filed last December 2, 4, and 19, 2024. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. These impeachment complaints are transmitted to the archives.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the guests of Honorable Dim Sarzali of the Loon District of Tawi-Tawi, and these are the personnel of the Ministry of Basic Higher and Technical Education led by the Provincial Director Maryam Nurudin.
Is there any objection? There being none.
The guests, Mr. Speaker, of Congressman Dim Sarzali. We would like to have them recognized. And these are the personnel of the Ministry of Tesda Tawi-Tawi led by Provincial Director Maryam Nurudin.
To the guests of our dear representative from Tawi-Tawi, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move that we consider House Bill Number 11354 under Committee Report 1365, submitted by the Committee on Justice. And for this purpose, may I request that the Office of the Secretary General be requested to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? Chair hears done. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the said bill.
House Bill Number 11354, Anna creating two additional branches of the Regional Trial Court and five additional branches of the Municipal Trial Court in cities in the 9th Judicial Region to be stationed in the province of Sanhuangga del Norte and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Sections 14J and 29 of Batas Pampansa Bilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Juliet Maridelion Ferrer, the Committee Chair of the Committee of Justice, to begin sponsorship of the measure.
The Honorable Congresswoman Juliette Ferrer, you are recognized for your sponsorship. You may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, it is an honor to sponsor House Bill Number 11354, contained in Committee Report Number 1365, creating two additional branches of the Regional Trial Court and five additional branches of the Municipal Trial Court in cities in the 9th Judicial Region to be stationed in the province of Sanhuangga del Norte and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Sections 141 and 29 of Batas Pampansa 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended, as principally authored by Representative Gloana S. Labadlabad. Mr. Speaker, I move that the explanatory note of House Bill Number 11354 be adopted as a sponsorship speech for the same measure.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no interpolator on the said measure, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship.
There being no interpolators for the said House Bill, there's a motion to close the period of interpolation. Any objection? There being none. Motion's approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
There's a motion to open the period of amendments. Any objection? Chair hears none. Motion's approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee nor individual amendment, I move that we close the period of amendment.
There's a motion to close the period of amendments. There being no committee or individual proposed amendments. Any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion's approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 11354. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
There's a motion that we vote on second reading, House Bill 11354. All those who are in favor, please say aye. All those who are against, please say nay. The ayes have it? House Bill 11354 is hereby approved in second reading. Congratulations. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we'd like to recognize in the meantime the guests of Attorney, Honorable Attorney Jervil Jinkybitrix R. Luistro from the Municipality of Lobo. These are Vice Mayor Angelito H. Abiera, Jordan Rohero, Edwin Makalala, Dennis Magnaye, Ariel Camo, Christian Lumanglas, Jerome Valmes, Albert de Chávez, Marvin J. Abdón, Mariel Leeca Alcantara, Noel de Chávez, Emmerlon Menes, JoMar Ramírez, Ronald Marsigan, Jose Delica, Mike Ledesma, Jeffrey Anuran, Jeremy Ilagan, Carl Vincent Gastilio, Ralph Ilagan, Gilbert Garzon, Jason Lester Gastilio, Jake Paglikawan, Eddie Safrudin, Reynaldo Guno Jr., Remi Ilagan Westro, Marlon Anyayahan, Marlon Kampang, Leo Serezo, John Mariel Serezo, Florentino Di Maño, Ricky Baxa, Aneline Abol, Fernando Abol, Arias Valmes, Sheila May Pérez, Christian Ramírez, JR Ramírez, Cheeto Albania, Pedong Karandang, Brando Duñas, Archie Gastilio, Randolph Limbaga, Norberto Abanilla Jr., Brian Capili, Mark Anthony Delmo, Jamaica Joy, Evangelista, Marvin Almarez, Ryan Lasalas, Hernán Atienza, Kurt Francis Nara, Renel de Chávez, Joler Adoptante, Jovelin Ramírez, Laurie Franes, Cecil Assi, and Karina Adalia.
Sa mga panauhin, mula sa bayan ng Lobo, sa pangunguna ng kanilang Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Angelito Abiera, mga guests ng ating napakasipag at napakahusay na kinatawan mula sa lalawigan ng Batangas. Malugod po namin kayo tinatanggap sa House of Representatives.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, also under the calendar of business for the day, I move to take up House Bill Number 11382 under Committee Report Number 1392, and may we ask the Secretary General to read the title of the measure.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the said House Bill.
House Bill 11382, Anna creating two additional branches of the Municipal Trial Court in cities in the 11th Judicial Region to be stationed in the city of Coronadal, province of South Catobato, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Sections 29 of Batas Pampansa Bilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we move to open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debates hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Juliette Ferrer to sponsor the measure.
The Representative Juliette Ferrer, you may proceed for your sponsorship.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, my esteemed colleagues, it is my honor to sponsor House Bill Number 11382, contained in Committee Report 1392, principally authored by Representative Peter B. Miguel, creating two additional branches of the Municipal Trial Court in cities in the 11th Judicial Region to be stationed in the city of Coronadal, province of South Catobato, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Sections 29 of Batas Pampansa 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended. Mr. Speaker, I respectfully submit that the explanatory note of House Bill Number 11382 to be adopted as a sponsorship speech for the said measure, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being neither, there being no interpolators, we move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
There's a motion that we close the period of interpolation. There being no interpolators. Any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion's approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
There's a motion to open the period of amendments. Any objection? Chair hears none. Motion's approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being neither committee nor individual amendments, I move to close the period of amendments.
There being no committee or individual amendments, there's a motion that we close the period of amendments. Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion's approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on House Bill Number 11382.
There's a motion that we vote on House Bill 11382. All those who are in favor, please say aye. All those who are against, please say nay. The ayes have it? House Bill Number 11382 is hereby approved in second reading. Congratulations. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider under the calendar of business for the day, House Bill Number 11384 as contained in Committee Report Number 1393. Printed copies have been previously distributed to the members pursuant to the rules. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill.
There's a motion to consider House Bill 11384. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the said House Bill.
House Bill Number 11384, Anna creating one additional branch of the Regional Trial Court in the 4th Judicial Region to be stationed in the Municipality of San Pasqual, and two additional branches of the Municipal Trial Court in the 4th Judicial Region to be stationed in municipalities of Lobo and Tingloy, all in the province of Batangas, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Sections 14E and 30 of Batas Pampansa Bilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Chairperson of the Committee on Justice, Representative Juliette Maridelion Ferrer of the 4th District of Negroes Occidental, to sponsor the measure.
The Honorable Chairperson of the Committee on Justice, Congresswoman Juliette Ferrer, you are recognized for your sponsorship. You may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, it is my honor to sponsor House Bill Number 11384, contained in Committee Report 1393, principally authored by Representative Jervil Jinkybitrix R. Luistro, creating one additional branch of the original trial court in the 4th Judicial Region to be stationed in the Municipality of San Pasqual, and two additional branches of the Municipal Trial Court in the 4th Judicial Region to be stationed in the municipalities of Lobo and Tingloy, all in the province of Batangas, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Sections 14E and 30 of Batas Pampansa Bilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended. Mr. Speaker, I respectfully submit the explanatory note of House Bill Number 11384 to be adopted as the sponsorship speech for the said measure.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation. Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation.
There's a motion that we open the period of interpolation. Any objection? Motion's approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we close the period of interpolation.
Is there any objection? Motion's approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendment.
There's a motion that we open the period of amendments. Any objection? Chair here is none. Motion's approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no individual nor committee amendment, I move that we terminate the period of amendment.
There's a motion that we terminate the period of amendments, there being no committee or individual amendments. Any objection? The chair here is none. Motion's approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 11384. So moved, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion that we approved on second reading, House Bill 11384. All those who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those who are against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 11384 is hereby approved in second reading. Congratulations. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed with additional reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading, as well as the communications and committee reports.
Secretary General, you may proceed.
Additional reference of business, bills on first reading, House Bill 11417, further amending Sections 6 and 9 of the Charter of Palampon Polytechnic State University by Representative Gomez.
The Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 11418, mandatory allocating budget for youth programs in the local government by Representative Hernandez.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 11419, granting free maintenance medicines to senior citizens by Representative Hernandez.
The Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 11420, institutionalizing the Philippine National Games by Representative Gomez.
The Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 11422, providing for monthly stipend for students in state universities and colleges whose parents are enrolled in the four piece by Representative Sendanya.
The Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 11424, providing for the revised charter of the Overseas Filipino Bank by Representative Salo.
The Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
House Bill 11425, amending the Creating a People's Small-Scale Mining Program and for Other Purposes Act by Representative Yap Eric.
The Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 11426, enhancing the protection and welfare standards for migrant workers through expanded compulsory insurance coverage by Representative Vargas Alfonso.
The Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs.
House Bill 11427, streamlining the registration and licensing of minahang bayan and ensuring environmental protection and responsible mining in the utilization of mineral resources by Representative Yap Eric.
The Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 11428, amending Article 1, Section 5 of the National Commission on Muslim Filipinos Act of 2009 by Representative Makapagal Arroyo.
The Committee on Muslim Affairs.
House Bill 11432, addressing the shortage of principals in public schools and for this purpose mandating a one-school-one-principal policy by Representative Castro Franz.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 11433, strengthening the Philippine Coast Guard by introducing policy and organizational reforms by Representative Madrona.
The Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 11435, converting the Municipality of Isulan, Province of Sultan Kudarat, into a component city to be known as the City of Isulan by Representative Sa Kaluran.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 11436, naming the Cebu Cordova Link Expressway to Raúl V. Delmar Bridge by Representative Delmar.
The Committee on Public Works.
Resolutions, House Resolution 2224 congratulating and commending Chino Tancontsian C in the 51st All Japan Sambo Championships and Japan 2025 International Competition held in Tokyo, Japan in January 2025 and for bringing honor and pride to the country and the Filipino people by Representative Gomez.
The Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 2225, urging the Committees on Agrarian Reform and Cooperatives Development to jointly conduct an investigation on the reported exploitation and violations committed by Agumil Philippines Incorporated against palm oil cooperatives and farmers in Palawan that resulted in heavy debts and displacement from their own lands by Representative Brosas Castro Franz San Manuel.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2226, urging the Executive Department through the DFA and the DOF to continue to participate actively at the United Nations Tax Convention negotiations from February 3 to 6, 2025, and to vote with all developing countries for the adoption of a comprehensive and progressive United Nations Tax Convention by Representative Sendanya.
The Committee on Foreign Affairs.
House Resolution 2228, urging the Department of Labor and Employment, the Department of Migrant Workers, and the Department of Foreign Affairs to craft a comprehensive plan of action to address the impact of United States President Donald Trump's immigration policies on Filipino migrants in the United States by Representative Salo.
The Committee on Foreign Affairs.
House Resolution 2229, calling the appropriate committee to conduct an inquiry into the alleged condominium oversupply in Metro Manila by Representative Copilar.
The Committee on Rules.
Communications, letters dated January 24, 2025 of the BSP Bank Officer 6, Office of the General Counsel and Legal Services transmitting to the House of Representatives duly certified copies of certain BSP issuances.
The Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Committee Reports. Committee Report 1414 submitted by the Committees on Social Services, Appropriations, and Committee on Ways and Means on House Bill 11423. Committee Report 1415 submitted by the Committees on Agriculture and Food and Appropriations on House Bill 11429. Committee Report Numbers 1416 and 1418 submitted by the Committee on Youth and Sports Development on House Resolution 2227 and House Bill 11431. Committee Report 1417 submitted by the Committees on Disaster Resilience and Appropriations on House Bill 11430. Committee Report 1419 submitted by the Committees on Civil Service and Professional Regulation, Appropriations, and Ways and Means on House Bill 11434. Committee Report 1 on the Privilege Page 00181.
The aforementioned committee reports are all referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the guests of Antonietta R. Yudella from the 2nd District of San Wangasibugay, the following visitors: Aniseta Awit, Merlita Awit, Christine Irene Bulan, Plaridel Kaparas, Joel Jeffrey Awit, and Caleb Bulan.
To the guests of Congresswoman Antoinette Atetata Yudella from San Wangasibugay, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move that we consider House Bill Number 11400 as contained in the Committee Report Number 1405, and for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? The chair here is none. Motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of said House Bill.
House Bill, House Bill 11400, an expanding the coverage of the senior citizens' privileges and benefits, further amending Republic Act Number 7432 as amended entitled, "An Act to Maximize the Contribution of Senior Citizens to Nation Building, Grant Benefits and Special Privileges and for Other Purposes."
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the Chairperson of the Committee on Senior Citizens, Representative Rodolfo Ompong Ordanes, be recognized to begin his sponsorship of the measure.
Is there any objection? The chair here is none. The Chairperson on the Committee on Senior Citizen, Congressman Ompong Ordanes, you may now proceed for your sponsorship.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and good afternoon to all our guests and colleagues in this august chamber. Today, I rise to sponsor the proposed House Bill Number 11400 under Committee Report Number 1405 entitled, "An Act Granting Additional Benefits and Privileges to Senior Citizens", amending for the purpose Republic Act Number 7432 as amended. This measure embodies our unwavering commitment to enhancing the welfare and quality of life of our elderly population. Ang ating mga senior citizens ay nag-alay ng dikada ng kanilang buhay para sa pagbuo at pag-unlad ng ating bansa. Kaya naman tungkulin natin bilang isang lipunan na parangalan ang kanilang mga ambag sa pamamangitan ng pagsiguro na ang kanilang mga pangangailangan ay patuloy na natutugunan at ang kanilang mga karapatan ay napangangalagaan. As such, this bill proposes a compilation of amendments to expand the benefits and privileges granted to senior citizens. Third-party apps and websites like Grab, Foodpanda, Chiapi, and Lazada have become essential to the Philippine economy. The rapid growth of digital technology has made it easier to access and provide products and services for the comfort of our homes. This shift became especially evident during the COVID-19 pandemic when mobility restrictions forced everyone, including senior citizens, to rely on the internet and digital platforms for basic needs. Sa embikisikasyong sinagawa ng Committees of Ways and Means, senior citizens at the Space Committee on Persons with Disabilities noong nakaraang taon, isa sa pinakamalaking isyong lumutang ay ang hindi pagbibigay o pagtanggi ng mga rarapat na diskwento na nakasaad sa batas para sa ating mga senior citizens duing sila'y bumibili o nag-order online. This bill addresses a gap in Republic Act 9994 or the Expanded Senior Citizens Act of 2010, which does not clearly apply discounts to online transactions. While we recognize the efforts of government agencies like the DTI, DA, and DOE in issuing Joint Memorandum Number 02 Series of 2024 to enforce seniority citizen and PWD benefits for online purchases, we see the need to enshrine this provision into law for stricter enforcement. Further, this representation believes that the state and the private sector are responsible for enhancing the general public's welfare, thus including introducing the role of HMOs and insurance. However, even with health plan enrollment and insurance benefits, many senior citizens still struggle to afford hospitalization and major surgery costs. This proposed amendment seeks to ensure that individuals covered by healthcare and insurance providers can still access the government-granted benefits by including payments made through HMOs and insurance companies. We can help ease financial burdens and ensure everyone receives necessary medical care. This proposed discounts and tax benefits will also help address the essential needs of senior citizens, reducing their financial burdens by covering essential goods such as medicines, food supplements, utilities, transportation via transport network vehicle services, toll fees in skyways and expressways, parking, and professional healthcare. The additional benefits including a 15% discount in electricity and water utilities, 8.5% special discounts on basic necessities, corresponding exemptions, and an increase in debt benefit assistance to 25,000 pesos directly improve the affordability of essential services and commodities. Moreover, expanded privileges like exemptions from parking fees and the Unified Vehicle Volume Program if a senior citizen is on board a vehicle and discounts on traffic fines demonstrate the government's respect and care for our mobility and dignity. My dear colleagues, this bill is more than just a piece of legislation. It is a statement of our nation's gratitude to this valuable sector. As such, I strongly urge this august body to approve this measure. Together, let us continue to build a society where our elderly are continuously cherished and safeguarded. Marami salamat po.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we terminate the sponsorship, the period of sponsorship and debate.
There's a motion. Any objection? There being none. Motion's approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair, the chair here is none. Period of amendments is now open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
There being no committee or individual amendment, there's a motion to close the period of amendments. Any objection? The chair here is none. The motion's approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 11400.
There's a motion that we vote on second reading, the approval of House Bill 11400. All those who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those who are against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 11400 is hereby approved in second reading. Congratulations. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we'd like to take up on second reading, House Bill Number 11359 and under Committee Report Number 1373, and we would like to ask the Secretary General to read the title of the measure.
There's a motion. There, is there any objection? There being none. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of said House Bill. You may proceed.
House Bill Number 11359, "An Act Providing for Comprehensive and Responsive Civil Registration and Vital Statistics System."
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair here is none. Motion's approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize Representative Angelica Natasha Ko of the Partylist BHW to sponsor the measure.
Congresswoman Angelica Natasha Ko of the BHW Partylist, you're hereby recognized for your sponsorship. You may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Honorable Speaker, distinguished colleagues, and fellow public servants, a pleasant day to all. On behalf of the Chairperson of the Committee on Population and Family Relations, Representative Ian Paul D., it is with great honor and deep responsibility that I stand before you today to sponsor and strongly advocate for the immediate passage of House Bill Number 11359 in substitution of House Bills Numbered 4480, 8823, and 9572 entitled "An Act Providing for a Comprehensive and Responsive Civil Registration and Vital Statistics System." This measure represents a long-overdue and transformative reform as the country's civil registration system is a 1930s law. The current civil registration framework is governed by Act Number 3753, also known as the Civil Registry Law of the Philippines, which was enacted into law on the 26th of November, 1930. While we accept the importance of our old law, this proposed measure will ensure the accurate, effective, and inclusive documentation of vital events in the lives of all Filipinos. While Act Number 3753 laid the foundation for civil registration, it is imperative to update and reform this almost-century-old law to align our civil registry system with technological advancements, international best practices, and the evolving needs of governance. Honorable Speaker, the civil registration serves as the foundation of legal identity of every Filipino. A birth certificate is not merely a document, it is the key that It is the key that unlocks fundamental rights and access to essential services such as education, healthcare, employment, social protection programs, and legal recognition. However, despite its undeniable importance, our current civil registration system remains burdened by systematic inefficiencies and challenges that undermine its effectiveness. Among these persistent issues are the fraudulent registrations of vital records uncovered during the Quad Committee deliberations, delays in birth registration, inaccessibility of civil registry services in geographically isolated and remote areas, data inconsistencies, and data management issues stemming from the absence of a unified digital platform for securing and maintaining the vital records. The Philippine Civil Registry Act seeks to address these challenges and institutionalize a modern, efficient, and responsive civil registration system through the establishment of the Philippine Civil Registration Authority, a specialized and independent entity distinct from the PSA's census, demographic and statistical functions mandated to administer and oversee the civil registration, promulgate and enforce policies, rules and regulations, establish and maintain the Philippine Civil Registry database, and ensure universal and accessible registration of vital records. The swift passage of the Philippine Civil Registry Act will bridge the inefficiencies in our civil registration system, ensuring that no Filipino is left undocumented and that every citizen has a legal identity and enhanced public service delivery. This will streamline processes with stronger data security and fraud prevention, improve coordination with national and local government units, and promote economic growth and global competitiveness. Honorable colleagues, this proposed legislation is not merely an administrative reform. It is a matter of social justice, governance, and national development. Delays in its passage mean continued inefficiencies, gaps in identity documentation, and lost opportunities for many Filipinos. I humbly call upon each of you to support the immediate passage of the Philippine Civil Registry Act. Let us act with resolve and urgency to institutionalize a modern, inclusive, efficient, and responsive civil registration system, one that serves not only the present generation, but also those to come. Thank you very much.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no interpolators, I move to close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Period of amendments is now open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being neither committee nor individual amendments, I move to close the period of amendments.
There being no committee or individual amendments, there is a motion that we close the period of amendments. Any objection? The chair here is none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to vote on second reading, House Bill Number 11359.
There is a motion that we vote for approval on second reading, House Bill Number 11359. All those who are in favor, please say aye. All those who are against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 11359 is hereby approved on second reading. Congratulations. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, pursuant to our rules governing inquiries and aid of legislation, I move to refer the speech of Representative Zia Alonto Adyong, delivered on January 27, 2025, to the Committee on Public Accounts.
Is there any objection? Hereby, motion hereby approved and referred to Committee on Public Accounts. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the House and the Senate have approved on third reading, House Bill Number 6557 and Senate Bill Number 23838, respectively, providing for the Magna Carta of Barangay Health Workers. We have been informed that the Committee on Local Government, sponsor of House Bill Number 6557, as well as the authors thereof, are in concurrence with the provisions of Senate Bill Number 2838. In accordance with our rules, I move to adopt Senate Bill Number 2838 as an amendment to House Bill Number 6557.
There is a motion to adopt Senate Bill Number 2838 as amended to House Bill Number 6557. Is there any objection? The chair here is none. The motion is approved. Senate Bill Number 2838 is adopted as an amendment to House Bill Number 6557. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the Senate passed with amendments, House Bill Number 10841, strengthening the Philippine Coast Guard by introducing policy and organizational reforms. We have been informed that the Committee on Transportation, the sponsor of the aforementioned House Bill, as well as the authors thereof, have no objections to the amendments of the Senate to the said measure. In accordance with our rules, I move to concur with the Senate amendments to House Bill Number 10841.
There is a motion to conquer with the Senate amendments to the House Bill Number 10841. Is there any objection? The chair is none. The motion is approved. Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the Senate passed with amendments, House Bill Number 10472, increasing the bed capacity of the Southern Tagalog Regional Hospital in the city of Bakuor, Province of Kabite. We have been informed that the Committee on Health, sponsor of the aforementioned House Bill, as well as the authors, has no objections to the amendments of the Senate to the said measure. In accordance with our rules, I move to concur with the Senate amendments to House Bill Number 10472.
There is a motion to conquer with the Senate amendments to House Bill Number 10472. Is there any objection? The chair is none. The motion is approved. Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the Senate passed with amendments, House Bill Number 10081, increasing the bed capacity of the Region 1 Medical Center in the city of Dagupan, Province of Pangasinan. We have been informed that the Committee on Health, sponsor of the aforementioned House Bill, as well as the authors, has no objections to the amendments of the Senate to the said measure. In accordance with our rules, I move to concur with the Senate amendments to House Bill Number 10081.
There is a motion to conquer with the Senate amendment to the House Bill Number 10081. Is there any objection? The chair is none. The motion is approved. Majority Floor.
Mr. Speaker, the Senate passed with amendments, House Bill Number 8925, requiring the proper and immediate burial of Muslim cadavers in accordance with the Islamic rites. We have been informed that the Committee on Muslim Affairs, sponsor of the aforementioned House Bill, as well as the authors, has no objections to the amendments of the Senate to the said measure. In accordance with our rules, I move to concur with the Senate amendments to House Bill Number 8925.
There is a motion to conquer with the Senate amendment to the House Bill Number 8925. Is there any objection? The chair is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Speaker, we move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended.
Authors to the aforementioned House Bills and House Resolutions, is there any objection? The chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to authorize all committees to conduct meetings or public hearings if deemed necessary during the House recess from February 6 to June 1, 2025.
There is a motion? Is there any objection? The chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to suspend for a few minutes.
Session suspended.
The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to authorize all committees to conduct meetings or public hearings if deemed necessary during the House recess from February 6th to June 1st, 2025.
Madam Speaker, I move to suspend for a few minutes. Session suspended.
This measure is very personal to me as one of the principal authors. The privilege and honor I share with the Committee Chairperson Alan Ekleo. Set to become the first national legislation for anticipatory action worldwide. It will facilitate the movement of national and local resources to be used to act before a hazard strike. This legislation was inspired and brought about by the Philippines' vulnerability to natural disasters and the need to respond with urgency and efficiency every single time disaster threatens to strike. To quote the explanatory note of House Bill Number 9935, which this representation filed on February 14th of 2024, this bill recognizes the need for a proactive approach to disaster risk management. It seeks to establish a systematic mechanism for declaring a state of imminent disaster. This mechanism will enable the government to anticipate and respond effectively to impending disasters, thereby minimizing their adverse impacts on vulnerable communities and enhancing the country's resilience to disasters. More specifically, the proposed measure also seeks to clarify and streamline the respective roles and responsibilities of government agencies, local government units, and other stakeholders in implementing anticipatory measures, mobilizing resources to address imminent disaster threats. The anticipatory action protocol under this bill or the step-by-step implementation of anticipatory action based on the activation of predetermined triggers aim to make sure all actions towards prevention, response, and recovery are done effectively and efficiently. The bill also aims to impress upon our responders and officials the no-regrets approach as a way to inspire another overachieving anticipation of danger and zealous prevention of damage to life and property. This measure augments and strengthens the policies and measures that have been put in place by RA Number 10121, also known as the Philippine Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Act of 2010. In the time that the Committee on Disaster Resilience has dedicated to deliberating, discussing, and working on this measure, its importance to our national disaster resilience policies is emphasized. It is our fervent hope as proponents of this measure that the House stands by and with us in our goal of making our nation strong not only after a disaster but more so before. With the support and permission of this August body, the passage of this measure is hereby respectfully sought. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Raul Daniel Manuel of Kabataan Party List for his interpolation.
The gentleman from the Kabataan Party List, the Honorable Raul Manuel, is recognized for his interpolation.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Well, the sponsor yield to just a few questions about this bill.
It would be an honor to respond to the questions of the Honorable Manuel of Kabataan Party List.
Salamat, Mr. Speaker. We share the intent of the sponsor na mas mapaghandaan natin ang iba't ibang forms of disasters sa ating bansa. Kaya ang magiging interpolation ko po, Mr. Speaker, would be a comparison between our mechanisms for declaration of state of imminent disaster tsaka ang mas, doon po mas familiar ang ating mga kababayan, yung state of calamity. So, ang unang tanong ko po, Mr. Speaker, is there any similar mechanism sa pag declare ng state of calamity na makicarryover din dito sa mechanism for state of imminent disaster? And if there are any differences, may ina din pong marinig natin mula sa ating sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, esteemed colleague. The most glaring difference between our existing declaration of state calamity and this particular measure is that the declaration of state calamity is actual after the fact, after the disaster occurs. Then, the government can now declare the state of calamity. It is actually a reactive measure that the government institution actually take right after a disaster strikes. In this particular measure, honorable Speaker, my dear colleagues, this is a proactive response to an impending disaster. With the aid of science and technology, we can now determine with almost certainty the strength of a particular typhoon, the wind speed, the potential damage. All are actually made available to us with the different government agencies, especially PAGASA and the UST. So, the idea is, what can we do knowing that this typhoon, whatever category it may be, knowing that this is actually bound to happen, what can we do to lessen the damage to our, to life and property? So, hindi na po, with a country like ours, that is actually being visited 20 to 25 times a year, with 30% of that is actually very destructive, we need to take a proactive response, or we need to develop that anticipatory mode of responding or preparing to known possible disasters. And this is the measure that we are introducing because this measure will actually provide government, local government units and the national government unit to mobilize resources prior to the arrival of, let's say, typhoon. Kasi with the aid of science and pre-disaster risk assessment, we can now determine how much damage or where are the possible areas that will heavily hit by typhoon. So, in a nutshell, parang ganito po 'yan, para mas maunawaan ang ating mga kababayan. If you compare the cost of repairing a small bahay kubo versus providing that bahay kubo, the owner of the bahay kubo of more resources to protect the structure, makikita naman po natin na mas malaki ang masesave ng ating pamalahan ng gobyerno sa pagbibigay ng tulong to reinforce the shelter rather than after the disaster, you provide the necessary resources to build the bahay kubo from scratch. So, yun po ang isang bagay na gusto natin maaddress. Pangalawa, sa kasalukuyang experienceya ng mga local government units, especially yung mga fourth and fifth class municipalities, which we all know have very limited Eldrim Fund. Kung titignan po natin papano sila, for example, evacuation, saan po nila kukunin 'yung pang evacuate na pera sa Eldrim Fund prior to the disaster? Eh, kung titignan po natin 'yung 5%, 70% of that is actually allocated for preparedness and prevention and mitigation. The remaining 30% is actually the quick reaction fund. Marami pong nagsasabi sa atin na mahirap kasi 'yan siya regalawin, kasi makukuha kami kung may pre-evacuation. Lumalabas kasi na 'yung activity namin is already a form of response, preemptive response. That preemptive response is actually not captured in 70%. So, yun ang nagiging concern. So, with this particular measure, we are introducing the concept of anticipatory action in the 70% of the Eldrim Fund. So, that in the event that there is an impending disaster and the result of the PDRA or the Pre-Disaster Risk Assessment suggests that a preemptive evacuation can be done, the budget for that, for that mobilization, for the logistics and everything can be sourced from the portion allocated for anticipatory action. So, yun po 'yung gusto nating maaddress, kasi taon-taon nasasalanta tayo ng bagyo, taon-taon din po tayo nagre-rebuild ng mga bahay ng mga kababayan natin, and napakalaki po ng gastos natin for the rebuilding rehabilitation. It is therefore our humble suggestion that we take proactive measures to prevent or to lessen the potential or to reduce the potential damage to the life and property of our kababayans. This is the heart and soul of this measure, Mr. Speaker, my esteemed colleague.
Mr. Speaker, we see the wisdom in that, lalo na sa mga kababayan natin. For example, in my case, I live in a hometown. for example, in my case, I live in a hometown. The permanent residence po natin ay nasa isang coastal area. At sa mga kababayan po natin na pwedeng naniniraan sa mga lugar na relatively mas prone to risks, like storm surge or 'yung mataas na level ng tides, lalo na kapag meron pang mga paparating na mga bagyo, in fact, kahit po alam nila na dapat sila mag-evacuate at merong mga panawagan na rin sa kanila ng barangay officials or ng mga LGU na mag-evacuate sila, may mga kababayan tayo na hindi agad-agad nag-evacuate. Hindi dahil matigas 'yung kanilang ulo o ayaw nilang makinig sa sinasabi sa kanila, pero dahil 'yung maliliit na mga bahay nila at kung ano mang kagamitan na meron sila, para sa kanila napaka-presious na yun. Kaya hindi nila kayang iwan 'yung kanilang mga gamit at kanilang mga bahay. Kaya may mga kababayan tayo na mas pinipili na medyo patagalin muna 'yung pag-stay sa kanilang mga bahay, tapos kapag lalong lumala na talaga sa kanila, sila mag-evacuate. Pero given the choice, ayaw nilang iwan 'yung kanilang residence. Kaya kapag meron tayong ganito state of imminent disaster, may declaration, tapos makakapagmobilize ang pondo, then, and of course, along with proper implementation, ito ay posibleng maging mainam na tulong sa ating mga kababayan. Kaya ang next na tanong ko, Mr. Speaker, is regarding the funding. Since based on what was mentioned by our sponsor, ay pareho pa rin ang fund source. It's the local DRRM fund. Tapos maging sa national agencies po natin, ang National DRRM Fund or Calamity Fund. Pero mas pinalawig natin ang scope ng pwedeng purposes para matap ang mga pondo na ito. So, our question, Mr. Speaker, kasi kapag may state of imminent disaster, big sabihin, naghahanda pa lang tayo. Pero kapag nangyari na, diba, magtatransition na tayo sa state of calamity. So, paano, o ano ang magiging papel ng mga agencies natin, LGU man, or national, para matiyak natin na walang, malalang overlap dun sa period na meron state of imminent disaster at may state of calamity?
Okay, thank you for that question, Honorable Speaker, my esteemed colleague. The declaration of imminent disaster is actually based on the pre-disaster risk assessment done by either the LGU or at the national level in consultation with other government agencies. And as we all know, the mobilization happens before the disaster strikes, assuming that this particular measure is approved. The effectivity of the declaration of state calamity does not happen automatically. As we all know, there is also that assessment right after the disaster strikes, if there's really a need to issue or to declare a state of calamity. So, these are actually two sets of processes that needs to happen not simultaneously, but one after the other. So, there's enough process, there's enough framework that will guide our decision-makers. We're just adding a new framework or guideline that our decision-makers can actually execute to provide more flexibility to our leaders in times of impending disasters. So, I don't see any conflict or even overlap, except for the disaster itself. We have enough safeguards. And right after the disaster strikes, it does not automatically, there's no automatic transition to a state of calamity because there has to be an assessment also of the damage, the extent of the damage before a declaration can be made.
With that, Mr. Speaker, I have no further questions. Sa ating sponsor, and we join him in securing the sufficient funds and preparations for disasters in the different parts of our country, especially in the Philippines, which currently ranks as the most risk-prone country in terms of climate disasters. So, marami salamat, Mr. Speaker, and sa ating sponsor.
Thank you, my esteemed colleague, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other members who wish to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The period of amendments is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee or individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The period of amendments is hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 11430.
As many as are in favor of House Bill 11430, please say aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill 11430 is hereby approved on second reading. Congratulations. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move that we consider House Bill Number 11429 as contained in Committee Report Number 1415, submitted by the Committee on Agriculture and Food. Copies of the bill have been previously distributed to the members, and I therefore request that the Secretary-General be instructed to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved, and the Secretary-General is directed to read the title of House Bill 11429.
House Bill Number 11429, An Act Establishing a National Program for the Malunggay Industry and Appropriating Funds Therefore.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
There any objection? The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Michaela Angela Biswan Singh of the First District of Nueva Ecija to sponsor, to sponsor the measure.
The lady from the First District of Nueva Ecija, the Honorable Michaela Angela Biswan Singh, Vice Chairperson, Committee of Agriculture and Food, is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, my esteemed colleagues, good afternoon. As Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Agriculture and Food, it is my honor to sponsor House Bill Number 11429 on behalf of the Chairman of the Committee on Agriculture and Food, the Honorable Wilfredo Marc M. Enverga. The bill entitled "An Act Establishing a National Program for the Malunggay Industry and Appropriating Funds Therefore" seeks to establish a national program for the comprehensive development of the Malunggay industry in order to: 1. Improve the investment climate; 2. Boost competencies and efficiency of agribusiness; 3. Promote Malunggay as a source of livelihood for poverty alleviation; and 4. Maximize its utilization for health and nutrition. The goal is consistent with the Declaration of Policy of Republic Act Number 7900, the High Value Crops Development Act of 1995, which is to accelerate the growth and development of agriculture, enhance productivity and incomes of farmers and the rural population, improve the investment climate, competencies and efficiency of agribusiness, and to develop high-value crops as export crops. House Bill Number 11429 will institutionalize the interventions for the promotion and development of the Malunggay industry from production to marketing, including export, and will pave the way for harmonized and integrated interventions from both the public and the private sector. This measure will be the mechanism to address the gaps and other challenges affecting the value chain of the industry, which includes production, processing, marketing, and export, among others. The key provisions of House Bill Number 11429 are as follows. First, it creates the Malunggay Industry Development Committee to be chaired by the Secretary of the Department of Agriculture and shall coordinate with various organizations to organize the moringa producers, processors, input producers, and suppliers, domestic and international marketers, traders, as well as allied and related industries into an umbrella organization. Second, it defines the roles of various government agencies to ensure the effective implementation of this act. Third, it formulates a five-year framework for development, which shall serve as a guide in the formulation and implementation of plans, programs, and projects for the advancement of the industry. And finally, it formulates the Malunggay Industry Roadmap, where all Malunggay stakeholders shall be involved. With this, Mr. Speaker, in view of the foregoing, the Committee on Agriculture and Food humbly seeks the support of our esteemed colleagues for the passage of this measure. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no interpolator, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendment.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The period of amendments is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee amendment nor individual amendment, I move that we close the period of amendment.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The period of amendments is hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 11429.
As many as are in favor of House Bill 11429, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill 11429 is hereby approved on second reading. Congratulations. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may I request that the guests of the Honorable Zia Adyong be recognized? And these are the Officers of the Development Bank of the Philippines, led by President and CEO Michael De Jesus, Senior Vice President Catherine Magana, Senior Vice President Carolyn Olfindo, Senior Vice President Sorai Adyong, First Vice President Christina Malab, Vice President Jose Maria Villarreal, Senior Assistant Vice President Luisa Aguirre Pangilinan, Senior Assistant Vice President Leopoldo Resmundo, Ms. Angela Nina Zano, and Mr. Louis Hethosis.
We welcome the guests of the Honorable Zia Alonto Adyong of the First District of Lando del Sur. They are guests from the Officers of the Development Bank of the Philippines, led by President and CEO, my friend, Michael De Jesus. Thank you for your visit. Welcome to the House of Representatives, Mabuhay Pukayo. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we are in receipt of the Conference Committee Report of the disagreeing provisions of House Bill Number 11144 and Senate Bill Number 2942 resetting the first regular elections in the Bangsamoro Region in Muslim Mindanao. Mr. Speaker, in accordance with our rules, I move to ratify the said Conference Committee Report.
There is a motion to ratify the said Conference Committee Report. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. And all... the said Conference Committee Report is hereby ratified. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Zia Adyong for his manifestation.
The Honorable Zia Alonto Adyong is recognized for his manifestation.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Majority Leader. Bismillah, rahmanir rahim. Mr. Speaker, I extend my deepest gratitude to my colleagues in both the Senate and the House of Representatives for their dedication and commitment to ensuring a smooth and stable transition for the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao. Mr. Speaker, the ratification of the Bi-Camel Conference, which we did earlier today, on resetting the BARM parliamentary elections, reflects our collective effort to safeguard the progress we have made in building the region's institution. When it comes to peace and development, we are all stakeholders, Mr. Speaker. Throughout the House deliberations and the Bi-Camel Conference, we made it a point to underscore the critical importance of the President's power to appoint, as reflected, Mr. Speaker, in our own House Bill version giving primacy and credence primarily to the constitutional mandate and authority by the sitting President to appoint these officers as referenced under Section 16, Article 7 of the 1987 Philippine Constitution. This power is not only necessary, Mr. Speaker, to maintain governance continuity, but also ensures that the leadership in the region remains aligned with the principles of inclusivity, efficiency, and accountability while it is still under transition period. It is worth emphasizing, Mr. Speaker, that the current occupants of the BTA themselves hold their position by virtue of presidential appointment. Their mandate, Mr. Speaker, exists because of presidential fiat, reinforcing the role of the President in guiding the transition process. Furthermore, Mr. Speaker, in crafting this measure, we ensured that regardless of what the President ultimately decides, there will be no vacuum in the Bangsamoro Parliament's leadership. The bill was designed to guarantee the continuity of governance, preventing any disruption in the transition period. So therefore, Mr. Speaker, I humbly appeal to the President that upon the signing of this bill into law, he will exercise the appointing authority granted to him by the Constitution without delay. The Bangsamoro people need clear and decisive leadership to sustain the progress we have made. The President's swift action will provide the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao while at still under transition period the mandate and the stability it needs to necessarily govern effectively and fulfill the aspiration of a fully autonomous regional government. Mr. Speaker, as we move forward, let us remain committed to ensuring that BARM fulfills its promise of delivering meaningful self-governance, peace and development to the Bangsamoro people. Mr. Speaker, we submit to the decision of the President, and we humbly appeal to him to appoint as expertly as possible new set of officers of the Bangsamoro Transition Authority. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Magandang hapon po sa ating lahat. Salam walaykum, barakmatullahi, tala, hwa barakato.
The manifestation is noted. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the Senate passed with amendments House Bill Number 5832 and 7007, declaring holidays in certain localities. We have been informed that the Committee on Local Government sponsor the aforementioned House Bills, as well as the others have no objection to the amendments to the said measures. In accordance with our rules, I move to concur with Senate amendments to House Bill Number 5832 and 7007.
There is a motion to concur with the Senate amendments to House Bills Numbers 58332 and 7007. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for a minute of suspension.
Session suspended. Session suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the House and the Senate have approved on the third reading House Bill Number 10147 and Senate Bill Number 2928, respectively, increasing the bed capacity of the Philippine General Hospital. We have been informed that the Committee on Health is sponsor of House Bill Number 10147, as well as the authors thereof, is in concurrence with the provisions of Senate Bill Number 2928. In accordance with our rules, I move to adopt Senate Bill Number 2928 as an amendment to House Bill Number 10147.
There is a motion to adopt Senate Bill Number 2928 as an amendment to House Bill Number 10147. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Senate Bill Number 2928 is adopted as an amendment to House Bill Number 10147. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that this suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended.